The March 18th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody tonight. Prior to the start of every city council meeting, we have an open podium opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to city business. Our meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 in these council chambers. If you wish to address the council at that time, it would be good to contact the city manager's office by noon of that date. 949-8412 is the phone number. Let us know your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. Then you would be a scheduled speaker during open podium. If there's sufficient time after scheduled speakers, there's an opportunity for people on an impromptu basis to address the council. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. Again, if you have any questions, contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. The first item on tonight's agenda is a very special thing called the LEED 360 Jefferson Awards, and we have a representative from the Jefferson Awards who will explain the program to us. We also tonight, as you may have noticed, have a couple of representatives, players from the Minnesota Vikings that are here as part of this ceremony. So, we'd like to start off with Tom Basquell, who is the Minnesota Regional Director for the Jefferson Award for Public Service. Tom?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tom Basquell, the Regional Director for the Jefferson Awards for Public Service. The Jefferson Awards were founded in 1972 by Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis, U.S. Senator Robert Taft Jr., and Sam Beard. And it was designed to be a very highly prestigious award for people who have donated so much of their time and energy giving back and making their communities a better place. The awards really serve not so much to recognize individuals, but to provide those individuals a place to tell their story, a platform to talk about why they give back, why it's important to them. The Jefferson Awards continues to recognize people like Bill and Melinda Gates, Colin Powell, Tom Brokaw, Sandra Day O'Connor, and Peyton Manning at a national level. But we also seek to inspire and encourage volunteerism among young people in our communities around the country. And that's why we created this initiative of the Jefferson Awards called the LEED 360 Challenge. We use this initiative to recognize, shine a spotlight on some of the outstanding service projects youth around the country do. Now, tonight, in partnership with the city of Eden Prairie and with the Minnesota Vikings, a supporter of the Jefferson Awards, we'd like to recognize two youth service projects tonight. And I would like to invite the representatives from the Minnesota Vikings, as well as the students from the International School of Minnesota here in Eden Prairie, and students from the ACES After-School Program to come join me up here. All right. First, I'd like to welcome our guests from the Vikings. If you'd like to say a few words about the Vikings and why you support service and volunteerism in the community?
Sure. I'll go first. And thank you for saying that I'm a player. I wish I could...[255.12][255.12](laughter) But I'm Brad Madsen, the Director of Community Relations for the Vikings, and I've had the pleasure of working with Tom for many years, and also been a supporter of the Jefferson Awards, and had the pleasure of being a judge the last two years, so I'm very familiar with ACES, as well as the International School, and the terrific work that they do. So, it's our honor and privilege to be here tonight, to recognize these young people. And I actually have the treat to introduce one of our new Vikings, who is no stranger to community service, and he starred at the University of Minnesota, which is where the Jefferson Awards are held. So I thought it'd be fun to have Simone Lawrence come up, linebacker from the team and fourth year in the league, is going to be doing great things for us and a community leader, so for me, makes my job easy. So, Simone Lawrence.
Thanks. Thanks.[306.27][306.27](applause) Name's Simone Lawrence. I just wanted to come here and say congratulations. You know, you guys are really, I really admire of you guys, you know, at such a young age, you know, doing such neat things, giving back, you know. It took me to get all the way to college to, you know, realize that it's my duty to give back, and I just think it's real awesome that you guys are so young and willing to give back, and I just want to say thank you, honestly. Thanks.
Thank you very much.[337.81][337.81](applause)
All right. So now I'd like to introduce the two winning projects. First one I'm going to award tonight is a project called Owl Exploration. It was done by fourth graders from the ACES After-School Tutoring and Mentoring Program. Owl Exploration is a fourth grade service learning collaboration between ACES and the University of Minnesota's Raptor Center. Students learned about owls through hands-on exploration, including owl pellet dissection and creating awareness-building skits. The students designed bookmarks with pictures and owl facts for the University of Minnesota's Raptor Center to sell at their facility as a fundraiser. The funds that were raised are used to broaden the outreach and the educational programming that the Raptor Center does in the community. And the students discovered that even as fourth graders, they too can have positive impact on their community. So, on behalf of the Jefferson Awards, not only are we going to award you a certificate of excellence for your service project, but for coming in second place nationally in the animal rights category, you also receive a $250 check to continue the service project. So, congratulations. Come on up.[424.12][424.12](applause) And secondly, we are going to recognize a project from the International School of Minnesota, which is right here in Eden Prairie, called ISM Against Hunger. ISM Against Hunger is an annual event that ISM organizes, raises money to fund supplies and basic needs for families in the Dominican Republic. Money raised has been used for food packing events, for water filtration equipment, and to help cover the cost of a habahut, which is a sustainable community resource that includes water filtration, a medical clinic, and community resource center for underserved villages in the Dominican Republic. To raise money, students sold T-shirts, bracelets, and even cookbooks, which they put together themselves from recipes from all over the world that students and families submitted. This project alone, students raised $5,000, packed 50,000 meals, and even had students travel to the Dominican Republic to serve that community. So, again, on behalf of the Jefferson Awards, we'd like to recognize student leader from the International School of Minnesota on your project.[513.12][513.12](applause)
While we're finishing up with pictures, I'd like to congratulate these young people on their accomplishments and their leadership, and certainly all of us up here on the city council understand the desire to get out and get involved and serve the community. Our communities really do become stronger when people volunteer to take care of problems within their community, or to make their community a better place for everyone to live. I'd like to encourage everybody in Eden Prairie, especially youth, to find an issue that they care about, to think big, and to do something about it. Then tell the community about your service by submitting your projects to the LEED 360 Challenge, and I imagine that that is on a website. Is it on the Jefferson Award website, or LEED 360 website?
It is on the Jefferson Awards website.
Okay.
JeffersonAwards.org, and there's a link right there for LEED 360.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'd love to recognize more service projects from Eden Prairie in the years ahead. Thank you very much. Tom?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, Brad and Simone.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it. And thank you for all the youth. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to add or delete? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion to correct the minutes of the February 18th meeting. They were previously approved on March 4th, 2014, to state in the second motion under item 9E, motion carried three to two with Tyra Lukens and K. Supposed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council workshop held Tuesday, March 4th?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the city council meeting minutes from that same date, Tuesday, March 4th.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar. We have six items on it. Is there anything to pull for discussion, or any questions on those? Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of items A through F on the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. First public hearing tonight is regarding MAC development, parcels two and three, the ones that we did not take action on at our last meeting. Pardon me? Pardon me, two and six, yes. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall at the meeting in February, you took action to continue this item to March, to this meeting in March, and mainly for city to have further discussions with MAC, and then to come back for consideration on those two remaining parcels at the city council level. MAC had requested that we push that out to April 22nd, the council meeting at that time, so we're able to meet and discuss the concerns that came up at the February council meeting, and they've also given us the letter granting extension, a consideration of this item until June. So it's asking that you continue this item to the April 22nd meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Getcho? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on parcels two and six?
Seeing none, I move to continue the discussion of parcels two and six to the April 22nd, 2014 council meeting, and direct staff to notice a public hearing on MAC parcels two and six for April 22nd.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next public hearing item is the vacation of an easement, public drainage and a utility easement over lots one, two, and three, block one, top view acres, third addition. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an action, public hearing, and action for vacating an easement related to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District property on, over lot one, two, three, block one, and top view acres. And in this particular case, we would be requesting to vacate the easement because there would be new easements dedicated with this project, and you may know it in the packet that XL Energy had some concerns with the existing easement. But in the resolution that we're asking you to act on, we condition future approvals based on working any issues out with the XL property. And you're also going to see, under the report, a public works director, along with this, is a consideration of the final plat for this project, but we thought, you know, for an update for the council as well, because this has been, I think, three, four-plus years in the making, that the watershed is here to give you an update on the project, and then you can, they're here for any questions you may have, and then we could have the public hearing.
Okay.
So I believe Kevin Begulkey is here to provide an update on the status of their project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for hearing our easement, or the easement vacation this evening, as well as the, later on, the final plat for your consideration. Mr. Getcho did ask that I provide a brief update on the status of the property and of what will eventually become the Nine Mile Creek Water Resource Center. As Mr. Getcho stated, it has been some time since we have last been before you. Some of the reason for the drawn-out process is that with the donation agreement with Barbara Carwar, who was the previous property owner, it allowed her to stay in the home until June of 2013. And so she, we allowed a little bit more flexibility. She was out, moved out of the property right around the first of July of 2013. And since that time, we've been going through, doing our proper assessment work on building condition and environmental conditions, et cetera. And over the course of this winter, we have been prepping the site. We had the driveway realigned and the parking area graded and prepared. We are also in the process of, currently in a bidding process for the renovations and the construction of the building. Our hope is that we'll have all of our permit applications and construction documents submitted to the city, if not by the end of this month, certainly the first week of April for city staff consideration. We'll be looking to award contract, hopefully, pending prices around the middle of April at our regular board meeting, and then starting construction towards the end of April, pending when road restrictions and snow decides to leave our lovely state. What we plan on doing is, over the course of, starting the end of April, over the course of the six months, is doing construction on the building. We'll be tearing down the two-stall garage, and that'll become what is considered the Water Resource Center component of the building, as well as some of the internal renovations in the house to become the district's office and facilities. And it's our hope that towards the end of October, first part of November of 2014, we'll have that project substantially completed, and we'll be able to take occupancy. And at that time, we'll be moving forward with the various programs and educational activities and use of the property, as well as having it open for the public. It is a public facility, and we intend to operate it as such during normal business hours. Regarding the easement vacation and the objection of XL Energy, we are in the process of working with XL Energy to relocate the power source to the property. Currently, there's power lines along Gerard Drive, and then one overhead line with a pole that extends into the property, and that is currently under XL Energy easement. That is going to be vacated. The power line is going to be relocated, and we're just in the process of working with them to determine where that exactly will be located. And at that time, I'm fully confident that the objection that XL Energy has at this time is more of a formality, and that will be removed as we're working with them currently, and should be resolved in the next couple of weeks. So, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Tom? Yep.
I have a couple of questions. So, you talked a little bit about site preparation. I live not too far from that area, and I've heard from a number of neighbors that are not too happy about the tree removal, and so I wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight and find, get your take on what trees have been removed, how many, you know, are we following the plan in terms of caliper inches being removed and replacement, et cetera? So that's the first question.
Yeah. The trees that are, that have been removed, the majority of the trees that had to be removed are actually as a result of the required parking lot to meet the city code. Most of those trees were not considered significant trees in the city's tree replacement plan. We are following the required tree replacement on a per caliper inch, and come, if not this next fall, certainly by next spring, we'll be working with both adding, planting additional trees to meet that requirement, as well as to providing some additional screening where the parking lot is at, as well as where the old driveway entered to provide that screening. So, it's a matter of trees needing to be removed to prepare for the parking lot. There was a few trees also that were removed to accommodate the construction work, whereas is really a building safety issue where old birch trees were leaning on, almost being propped up by the building, and so those were removed this week. But those, any trees that meet replacement values will certainly be replaced as, you know, it's part of our mission as a natural resource agency.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, relates to, so the easements that you're asking to be vacated tonight were to do with drainage easements. There are some issues with drainage, water drainage, surface drainage in the area. Are you planning to, when you vacate these, are you planning to change the runoff at all, or what kind of, what, give me a little bit more details, other than just vacating the drainage easements?
Yeah. Currently, there's actually no water that leaves the site. If anything, we're accepting additional water that's coming off of the streets, and it is fully our intent to maintain that through our water management. With our own requirements, we require that the water that would eventually drain into a municipal storm system be retained, the first inch of runoff be retained on-site. It is actually our goal that we're going to probably achieve zero runoff leaving any impervious surfaces on the site. Just currently with the landscape, or the slope and the topography of the property, there is no water that can leave the property that goes onto roads or onto city property. It's all contained, and it will remain that way.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of this easement? Mr. Getcho, or Mr. Russell?
Only after the, after the public hearing, if there's no one else.
Okay, I don't, was there anybody that wanted? I didn't see any hands. I think we're fine.
Okay. I just want to recommend that, and I discussed this with Mr. Ellis earlier today, that paragraph three of the resolution read more like paragraph four with respect to the contingency on the satisfying the objection of XL Energy. And the suggested language that I'd request you include when a motion is made is that this resolution is contingent upon and shall not be effective until the resolution of the XL Energy objection to the vacation with no cost to the city.
Okay. Thank you. So, whatever motion, whoever makes the motion, this will be incorporated into that language?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating the public drainage and utility easements over lot one, two, three, block one of top view acres, third addition, including the language that Mr. Russell just read.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The third public hearing that we have tonight is the aquatics addition to the Eden Prairie Community Center. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lothammer, but just add that you may recall at the last city council meeting, Mr. Lothammer provided an update on the project and the timeline for the project, which includes a public hearing on the site plan review tonight, and then actually not receiving bids on this project until the end of April for council consideration in early May. So tonight is really related to the site plan approval and the public hearing with that, and then later on at subsequent meetings, you would actually deal with the bids and the approval of the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lothammer.
Okay. Before Mr. Lothammer starts, we have a sign-up sheet out there, and could we get that sign-up sheet brought up so we know the order of speakers? Thank you. Mr. Lothammer?
Your Honor, Council members, just to reiterate slightly what Mr. Getcho indicated, this item tonight is to look at and consider the site plan. And I know, different than some of the developments that come before you on a regular basis for site plan analysis, this one you're very, very familiar with from the very beginning, and I think you have a very good understanding. As you mentioned, last council meeting, we did review with you interiors, exteriors, how it fits onto the site, showing you the site plan. This is then, it's been in front of the Planning Commission, who it's their role to take a look at it and analyze it and make a recommendation towards the council. And their recommendation is that the site plan amendment does conform. It fits with the type of use that would happen in a park. The addition is part of what some of the amenities are already in place at the community center. And so tonight, the action is for approving the site plan. You will see some of the documentation in your packet as well of how it sits on the site, where it does, what the findings of the Planning Commission were. But if there are certainly any questions, and I know also tonight, we do have speakers, and so if you'd like me to respond to any questions you have now, or after the discussion takes place, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. Maybe both. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Lothammer? Okay, we have a, we've had a sign-up sheet for this public hearing, and a number of people signed up, so we're going to limit speakers to a maximum of three minutes. The first speaker is Fred Kopplman.
Tell me, has the decision been made to replace or build a new aquatic center? Or is that still in the offering?
A decision hasn't been made on it. We have plans drawn up that involve a new pool and incorporation of the old pool into a new center. Yep.
My understanding is replacing is around $12 million, and building a brand spanking new one is about $20. Is that pretty close?
Mr. Lothammer?
Sir, your honor, the way that we've looked at the cost estimates are in a phase one, phase two of construction, because that's how it would have to happen in order to keep one of the pools open at all times. So phase one is estimated to be about $12 million. That, at that point, leaves the current pool open, and phase two is closer to the $7 million, and that replaces the current fate, or the current pool with a zero-depth entry, more of what we're calling the recreational pool. Within those cost estimates, it's also the locker rooms, dryland training rooms, meeting rooms, restrooms, lobby, as well as some expansion to the fitness area on the second floor of the facility.
So, I'm told that we're talking about building a brand-new facility. Is that not the case?
Yeah, so part of it does go on. The footprint that's towards Valley View, that's empty. So that, phase one is all brand-new. It's an addition to the building. Phase two, then, demos the current pool that's in place, and then puts a more compliant pool in its place. So there is, of the 50,000 square foot of total space, about 32 of that is what you would say is brand-new space to the site.
And all this without any taxes, raising taxes, I'm told?
The projections are, based on our debt service and the falling amounts of debt service over time, that this could be a debt-neutral or tax-neutral situation. For council's perspective, that is some more updated information that we'll share at the May 6th. We've foreshadowed it for you and given you some examples, but certainly when you're dealing with any type of bonding scenario, it's related to what the current interest rates are, and so our closer projections are, as we get to the May event, so you'll be armed with that information to aid you in making the decisions, as well as the actual prices of what it would cost. At this point, we're only dealing with cost estimates, and once the bids are open, that's when we'll know what it really, really is.
Sure. Well, my understanding that the current expenditures are going to be over by this year, the assessments, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but paying for this new facility would add about 15 or 20 years to the current assessments, and that's where the no-tax idea comes in. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I've heard.
Yeah, as you look at the city's overall debt, there is some debt that's being retired that happens almost on an every-year basis, and so as you look out at the projections and the debt is falling, this, if bonds were to be sold and the project were to go forward, this would take the place of some of that debt, but not to the extent that it would then cause taxes to go up. That's what the models that we've run so far to date and what we've shared with the council have indicated.
Mr. Kopplman, we're at four minutes now.
Okay, sure.
So, I would encourage you to, like, send an email to Mr. Lothammer, or come to some of the future meetings where, once the bids are open, we'll be talking about some of these. This is the site plan review.
Well, my main concern is a referendum. I think we need that, rather than just go and spend the money without asking the people. Because my neighbors, they should have something to save on it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The next person is Sarah Nelson.
Hi. I'm Sarah Nelson, and I've been a member of Eden Prairie Community Center for over 20 years. A pool and fitness center patron. Back in 2000, I used to go to the fitness center upstairs in the morning before work. There might be six people trying to get on those treadmills. I think there were three of them at the time. And now, after this fabulous improvement to the building, what do we have, 20, 30, 40 people upstairs? I never thought that when they built it, they would come, as they did. And it's fabulous facility, and it's my facility. With the increase in that membership in the center, I see an increase in the number of the people that are going into the pool in the morning. My husband and I will frequently, not as much now, but swim in the morning, and we see all abilities of people using the facility. It's only an eight-lane pool. We can get about 10 people in if we work together. But with the upgrades that you did back in 2007, the pool was left back in the 80s, and it's, it's really missed out. What I'd like to review is what I think are the advantage of an aquatic center addition. You, you're able to have exercise for all ages and abilities. I met my son's government teacher at the high school back in about 2000, when she was training for the Boston Marathon in the diving well. She was jogging, because she has stress fracture. High school athletes, all ability people are able to train in the pool, doing whatever they can do if they have injuries, if they're training for triathlons, if they're swimming, et cetera. Everybody can do whatever they want to. New aquatic center is going to benefit, and this is not in order, but families, because they can play and swim with their kids. Swimming lessons for our community, our kids. We probably have hundreds of families that do not have a swimming history and do not know how to swim. Drowning is still a major cause of death for children in all ages. Aquatic exercise classes for everybody, universal access for everyone, synchronized swimmers. We might be able to have a water polo league for all ages. And of course, our competitive swimmers throughout Eden Prairie and the other areas. It's just an added benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mark Davis.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Mark Davis. I'm the president of Fox Jets Swim Club. I'm here tonight to say that you have a lot of support in the community, within our program, within the high school, within families for new aquatics facility. Back when the Eden Prairie Community Center was renovated, we worked tirelessly to try to get a pool renovation at that time, and it wasn't done. And the community has really missed out. The pools aren't code-compliant at this point, and there's many needs, aquatic needs within the community that haven't been addressed. We've worked for the last nine to 12 months with city staff, who has also worked tirelessly to create something that's good for all of the residents within the community. It serves families and zero-depth needs for young swimmers. It serves the competitive community. It serves lap swimming, master swimming, our own team within the competitive swim team league. And so we're here tonight to say that we're in full support. One thing I'd like to do quick is just ask everyone that's in support of the Aquatics Center to pre-stand for just a second. Lots of support. And this was from one simple email this afternoon, asking for people that thought this was an important enough issue to interrupt their dinner and their family time and their study time to come out and show that we're in support. We're residents of the community, and we're in support of finally taking the last step and addressing the needs of the aquatics area within the Eden Prairie. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, we have Steve Nelson.
My name is Steve Nelson. I'd like to thank you for hearing me out. I am also in, excuse me, in support of this new pool. As people have said, we've got a wonderful facility here. We've got a wonderful city. We just did some work in our kitchen, and as a result of that, we had one of your inspectors coming out to make sure that we had done the work properly. And we got to talking a little bit, and he was saying that he had come from another city. Why he would want to live there, I don't know. But he was saying that, oh, yes, you know, the roads still have not been plowed at home. I come to Eden Prairie, and everything is taken care of. It's all done. The roads are fantastic. We live in a wonderful city. Things are done very well here. And I would like to encourage everyone on the board to, let's take one more step. Let's put in a really state-of-the-art aquatics facility, because what we have really is not that good. My son and daughter swim on the high school team, and they have to hold swimming meets over at Oak Point. And there's virtually no room for any spectators. And we have lots of spectators that love to come watch our kids swim, because we've got very good swimmers on the Eden Prairie High School team. And I would love to be able to watch my daughter in her senior year swimming in a facility that surpasses those of, some of the other teams that we have in this conference. I really want to encourage you to, let's put in this wonderful state-of-the-art facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Toolman. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Toolmans?
You did fine.
Okay.
Mayor and city council, thank you for hearing me out. I'm a citizen of Eden Prairie. I've been here now for 16 years. Really love being here, love living here. But I'm also here standing in front of you as a Team Fox Jets member, as well as a board member. I remember taking my son, you know, when he was just born, to a introduction to water class in Oak Point. And we had a wonderful time, and I knew that I had a swimmer on my hand at that time. But after that time, there was kind of a void, you know, in taking him to a wonderful pool where children would have a lot of fun, with great slides, with, you know, no-debt pool. And, and it was really a void that we had in this community. We actually took our child to neighboring communities, and we felt that there was a hole that we needed to fill. Time has passed, and he's now a swimmer for, for Team Fox Jets. And Team Fox Jets is a team that has meant a tremendous amount for us. We've been members there for eight years. And just to kind of put a couple of metrics in front of you, we have currently about 350 members. We probably taught about 10,000 children how to swim and also swim fast, and really become kids with strong goals and really aspirations to do better every time. Many of those kids came back in the community, and they taught other children how to swim, became lifeguards for the Eden Prairie High School. And that all happened, spending about 50 to 20 hours a week in Eden Prairie Community Center pool. The pool has done its service, but the pool is not up-to-date for continuing that particular purpose. The pool is too shallow. You can dive in it. It can be dangerous, especially for competitive swimmers. So you see all of these members from Team Fox Jets, because there's very strong support to update the pool, to be up-to-time, and to also stay in line with our neighboring community. So we hope that you listen to us, and we hope that we will look at a, at a brand-new pool in the future, and that we continue our, the evolution of our team in the Eden Prairie facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toolmans. Leanne Kruger.
Hi there. I think that most of my questions or comments, it sounds like, are probably going to be addressed at a future meeting, as most of my concerns concern the funding. I too am a community center patron, that's why I'm dressed like this tonight. I don't personally use the pool. I don't disagree that it perhaps is not the most up-to-date. My concern is that we're talking about spending $20 million of taxpayer money without really asking the taxpayers if they want to do that. I guess my main question tonight is, when does the funding get addressed? And, and, and when does the decision as to whether or not this goes to a referendum to the voters? When is that decision made? Or is that decision going to be made?
Mr. Getcho, do you want to go over the timetable?
So as I mentioned before, the council's been, I would go back to, I think it was the fall of 2012, where there was a discussion of a feasibility study for this potential aquatics upgrade. So actually, the question of how you would fund it, and if you would need a referendum, or if you do not need a referendum, or if you want a referendum, has actually been discussed for the last year-plus or so. So along the way, the discussion and direction from the council is to continue to move forward with plans and specs, which lead to a meeting on May 6th where they would be, where they would have bids in front of them to vote to move forward with the project. At a subsequent period of time, the city would then need to bond for a portion of that. So that would be subsequent action as well to bond for it. Up until that time, the council could direct the staff, if there is going to be a referendum, to move it to a later time, because there would have to be an election at some point in time. But as I've been told, that there are methods to finance the project that do not require a referendum. So if, if there are, if there is the ability to issue debt without a referendum, then those are options that the council can consider. And also, it's our understanding that the interest rates, there's different types of debt you can issue, but the interest rates on the debt wouldn't be any less with a referendum than not a referendum.
Okay. That answers that for now. Thank you. Uh-huh. Tim Kruger.
I'm going to relinquish my time, because my wife just asked all the questions.
Oh. She took the words out of your mouth, huh? Okay. Dan Cottrell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I also need to thank my daughter for giving me permission to be here tonight. It was her spring concert, so I got to see the jellyfish, but I missed the rest of the Oceans of Fun. And I want to thank Jay Lothammer and Rick Getcho. They've been fantastic in terms of the research they've done, as well as their response and sharing of all the information I've asked for. So I've been following this for a couple of years, or for the past year, starting with Town Hall back in April. And I think we all agree that something needs to be done. So $1 million to do maintenance makes perfect sense. So really, what we're talking about here is the $12 million option and the $20 million option. And so my, as I've been following up on this, I want to point out, I have never taken a position pro or con. So there's lots of reasons to do it. There's also lots of reasons not to. So the Eden Prairie School Board's going to be asking for money probably this fall. That's a priority. So everything's a priority. So people have to prioritize across all these options. So I think there's lots of great reasons. The Fox Jets team, Special Olympics, children and families in our community, lots of reasons to do this. But there's also lots of reasons to, to think about it. And that's why a referendum is so important. Give every person an equal voice, an equal vote, and let the community decide. Just out of curiosity, how many up here are members of the community center? Just a couple? About half you? Okay. So, so again, I mean, some of you have chosen to be in, some have not. Tonight, and I hope you'll give me a little bit more time, I just really need three things clarified, and I've been really working hard on these. One is, Mr. Getcho just mentioned the referendum. Is it required versus is it appropriate? So I just want a couple of comments on that. The second thing is, the phrase "without raising taxes" has been used a lot. Mr. Koppelman asked about that. So I want to make sure I get some clarity around that in my own head, what that means. And then the third thing is, looking at the lease revenue bonds versus the tax abatement bonds, and make sure that I'm providing accurate information. So, so I know that there's been some discussion about information I've been sharing. I want to make sure that I'm being accurate when I share it. So the first thing is, I want to congratulate you. You've done really a good job of getting the information out to voters. People are aware that there's a aquatic center proposal out there. The bad news is, everyone I talk to, or many of the people I talk to, think they get a vote on it. So, so they're appreciative of the fact that you're doing all the research to get accurate estimates. But when I ask them to sign the petition, they're saying, "Sign the petition, aren't we going to get a vote on it?" So everyone's expecting a vote on it. So if you're not going to give them a vote on it, please communicate that, because that's not getting out there. People are aware you're doing the research. People aren't aware that they may not have a voice in this. So I just want to point that out as I'm going out collecting signatures on a petition. The point about "without raising taxes," and I don't know the protocol. I'm going to get these out of here. So I pulled some information from Mr. Lothammer's presentation, and I figured it'd be easier if you could see it. All this is available on the epoolvote.com website. So if people want to look at this later on, they're certainly welcome to. But the point about "without raising taxes," I'm looking at slide number three, where Mr. Lothammer laid out the Phase 1, Phase 2 cost estimates of $19.4 million. And when I go down there, there's a line called "estimated annual payment, $1,328,995." Also below there, I see estimated operating surplus of between $200,000 and $500,000. So when I subtract $500,000, assuming best-case scenario from the $1.3 million, that leaves a gap of about $800,000. And so the question is, how are we going to pay for that $800,000? Is it user fees, membership dues, or is it taxes?
Mr. Lothammer? We've only got about another 40 seconds or so, so.
The formula that we have suggested, again, is the, the refer, or the bonds that have been on the books with the city for quite some time. Some of them are being retired. So when you look at what the city's debt service is, when it goes down, if these were then funded through bonds, that would enter into that what would be a lowering or a gap. And so it is-
Is that what's shown here on slides four and five, where you see the decrease in, it looks like, 2015? Essentially, that's my question. I think Mr. Koppelman asked this too, is that in 2005, voters approved $6.6 million for the community center, $4.6 million for the parks, $2 million for trail expansion. When are those debts going to be retired? Are they shown on these charts?
They are certainly within the overall city debt service, correct?
Okay. So when these are retired, the voters gave us permission to use that money for a certain thing for, and, and once that debt is paid off, those taxes go away, correct? You wouldn't consent you to collect, collect those taxes?
Some of, some of the debt that the city carries is based on having referendums and bonds sold. Some of the debt is issued by the city without referendum or, or vote. So when you look at this total debt that is projected for the entire city, it's a mix of all of those things. And included in there is the portions that were sold for the, the community center improvements several years ago.
So when those are retired-
Mr. Lothammer, I'm going to, and Mr. Cottrell, I'm going to cut you off. We've already gone five minutes. We're dealing with a site plan today, not funding. So I don't feel like this is-
Will there be another public hearing on the funding? Because I know with a state statute requiring a petition be submitted within 30 days, that would be 30 days within the public hearing on the funding, correct?
The timeframe? I don't think you have to give us the petition 30 days before. You can give us the night of.
No, no. What I'm saying is, there's a state statute that if you use general obligation bonds, a petition can be submitted requiring a referendum. But that has to be submitted, I believe, 30 days after the public hearing. So I'm curious as to whether there's a public hearing specifically on the funding.
Mr. Russell?
If, if a form of financing is used by the city that does not require a referendum, the answer to the question depends upon the type of financing. For abatement, tax abatement bonds, a hearing, a public hearing is a requirement. So in, if that's the form of financing that was selected, a hearing would be held. Other forms of financing may or may not require a hearing.
Right. So, so like of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, where to issue bonds, lease revenue, or revenue lease bonds, that it wouldn't be required, but it's at a higher interest rate? And I know Kathy Nelson says she wouldn't support the higher interest rate. And so, and the HRA is appointed by the city council. It is the city council. The bonds then would be approved by the city council. So there's a lot of issues I have with the HRA, but I know I'm over my time.
Why don't you contact them and get answers to your personal questions?
All right. I'll try to get some clarity about the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. David, is it Perkin? Perkin?
I'm going to try to make this a lot shorter than that. I'm on, I'm here on the behalf of Fox Jets, trying to make an understanding that this will be not only an asset to the city, but to all the people that live in it, such as your children, grandchildren, yourself, and many others. your children, grandchildren, yourself, and many others. I want to say two points that I hope is well heard, and it's that this is going to set Eden Prairie apart from other communities, and will continue to be a recreational asset for many other years other than just this one. In addition, it will also create a revenue stream, and many people won't think of that, for the city and for other people who are being drawn in from other cities around the area and region, for competitive meets and for other activities as well. So this pool is not only gonna be a benefit for Fox Jets, but for many others that live in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Finally, we have Sheila Kinney.
Price is Right, hello. Hi, City Council. Thanks for having me here. Sheila Kinney, Eden Prairie resident for 10 years. We've heard a lot of good reasons why we should update a pool. I haven't been convinced we need a $20 million aquatic center. We're watching government grow at every level, federal, state, city. Taxpayers are feeling very pinched. Our home values here in Eden Prairie have not come back. I've followed the issue parks referendums for 10 years since I've moved here. In 2004, there was a $22.5 million park question that was rejected by the voters, and at that time, you guys were all around it, was $8.8 million for an outdoor water park that was rejected. So the city hired a private marketing company and reworked it and said, "How can we go back to the voters?" And they came back in 2005 with a four-split questions. That's when we approved $6.65 million for the community center. That of course went up over $11 million, almost twice as much as the voter-approved you guys spent. Now here we are, being asked for $20 million for a pool, but back in 2005, it was only $3.3 million to update and upgrade our community center pool. I really don't like that you guys are framing this as a pool upgrade. It's a large aquatic center, and whether you know, or not, you think that the money's gonna flow in by fees and other groups that are using the pool, I think we've known with the community center that it's not a money-making operation. It's a, you know, it's something that you think is good for the community, and that's fine, and the community got the right to vote on that $6.65 million, even though you spent over $11 million. I think all we're asking for is the right to vote. It seems to me that the council has been working on this for many years. People are frustrated. I actually think if you were to go back and ask for just one nice revamp and get a 12-lane pool at the community center and make the case, I think you might have support for that. I hate to see you pushing this through, especially in this economy. It seems very, very irresponsible. There's a website, epoolvote.com, that we put up, where people can get more research on this. You've spent $700,000 on design plans already. Mr. Lotthammer says this is going to be shovel-ready by June. I feel like me talking here is just time away from the family, but I hope you'll consider what I'm saying, that I think, and same to Fox Jets, that there would be support if this were what you need, which is a 12-lane, whatever depth you need, competitive pool, and scaling down this project, and take consideration of the taxpayers here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That comes to the end of our list of speakers. Council, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
There's-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have any else on our list. Okay. If there's somebody else that wants to speak, please come up. I don't have your name, so please state clearly so we can get it in the record then.
My name is Rob Hiller. I'm a resident of Eden Prairie. Think you guys have done a great job. And number one, one of the things, when you get the community involved, I don't use all the facilities at Eden Prairie, but guess what? They're great for Eden Prairie and great for a lot of people. I don't really swim that much. I probably have been in the pool twice, but I think this is a terrific idea. When people think about Eden Prairie and want to move here for real estate, this is one of the keys they look at. All the parks, all the things that you do. The pool will be a big selling point. Our schools are important. So I think it's a terrific idea to do, and I probably won't use much of it at all. The only thing I would say is, I would encourage to add to this $105,000, $35,000 a year for three years to upgrade the cycles and all that kind of equipment in that whole area. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna spend $19 million, $105,000 is a pittance, and it would probably help that part. So consider that as an option, so that we add over three years, about $105,000. I think that would help upgrade, because they're always trying to do something better for the people who use it, and I think that would be a wonderful thing to consider. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else? Yes.
My name is Nick Remus. I am a member of the Eden Prairie High School Swim Team, Team Fox Jet, and I also lifeguard and teach swimming lessons over at the community center. And over the past few months, our lesson program has, like, seen, like, a huge increase in participants. I feel like a nicer pool will, like, maybe draw more people in and help us out. And plus, as a lifeguard, I hear a lot of patrons, like, ask, like, "Oh, is there, like, a spa or jacuzzi here?" And, like, that, that would also maybe draw more people in. Like, I don't know if the plans have any, like, plans for, like, a hot tub or anything in the pool, but, and another thing is, for our swim meets, our diving team does not feel like they are a part of our team, because our, our swim meets happen at the Oak Point Pool, because the pool is not deep enough to do, like, starts at Oak, at the community center. And so for our home meets, we can't even watch our divers compete, because they're at a separate facility, because there's not a place to do diving at the Oak Point, and there's not, it's not deep enough to do competition starts at the community center, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Council?
No.
Yes.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, just make a comment about this. I really am looking forward from staff about hearing figures and everything as soon as possible. As we had asked for this last November, and we're finally getting to it, I had looked up statistics through National Bureau Labor Standards, where there's going, there's generally increases of 2% to 3% on building materials. You know, if somehow this goes another year, it automatically ups at least 2%. The Federal Reserve is getting some indication that the prime rate for interest may go up a half percent this fall. So there is some reason to be looking at bonds for bond costs soon. But I don't want to see the proposal put off another month or another month. I really would like to hear it by early May. So I'm encouraging you to meet your sort of your own deadlines at this point, please.
Thank you for that comment. All right, council, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution for site plan review on 103 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for coming tonight. You don't have to listen to the rest of the meeting if you have other things going on, like dinner and homework and everything. Thank you for coming. We'll just take a little bit of time to let the noise settle down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the-
Did you catch the name of that student? Oh, okay. All right, the next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens?
Aye.
The next item is appointments. We need to do a chair and vice chair of the Board of Appeals and Equalization. Mr. Getchow?
We do, Mayor and Council. You may recall that we made these appointments in November due to some new rules regarding appointment to the Board of Appeal and Equalization. So we have not yet approved a chair and vice chair, and you did the appointments of all the commissions and chairs and vice chairs at the last meeting, so this is kind of that last action with our commissions.
Okay. Thank you. Does somebody wish to make the motion?
I move to appoint Patricia Pidcock Chair and Lyndon Moquist Vice Chair of the 2014 Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. First thing is, under reports of council members, we have a resolution supporting the Wylond Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. And the resolution was attached to the documents that were received, and this is something we have done for the last couple of years, supporting water conservation efforts by reminding residents to participate in the Mayor's Water Challenge for Water Conservation during the month of April. And I think the first year we did this, did we win? Didn't we win?
I believe we did. I think in our category, we came in first or second mayor, and I think last year, we were still top 10 in our category, so.
I think that's right. It's a great opportunity for residents to educate themselves about ways to conserve not just water, but also other forms of energy and other valuable resources. So I would love it if someone, someone would make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. First thing is, under reports of council members, we have a resolution supporting the Wylond Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. And the resolution was attached to the documents that were received, and this is something we have done for the last couple of years, supporting water conservation efforts by reminding residents to participate in the Mayor's Water Challenge for Water Conservation during the month of April. And I think the first year we did this, did we win? Didn't we win?
I believe we did. I think in our category, we came in first or second mayor, and I think last year, we were still top 10 in our category, so.
I think that's right. It's a great opportunity for residents to educate themselves about ways to conserve not just water, but also other forms of energy and other valuable resources. So I would love it if somebody, someone would make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is the city manager evaluation, and at our last meeting, our city council met in closed session to evaluate the performance of our city manager, Rick Getchow. The contract of the city manager requires an evaluation at this time every year, and we reviewed the results of the evaluations that were conducted of the city manager, and these evaluations were done by city council members, department directors, and division managers. The evaluations by all the groups were consistently positive, and the council determined that the performance of the city manager actually moved from exceeding expectations, which is what we felt last year, to greatly exceeding expectations. And many of us work with other city managers in the course of working on various regional committees and task forces and, and everything. Plus, we've worked with other city managers during the time that we've been at the city of Eden Prairie, and we definitely feel that Rick is in the top, top tier, the top handful of city managers that we've encountered around the Twin Cities. So thank you for your continual improvement, definitely. The next item then is to deal with his compensation, and the proposed increase in salary for the city manager is proposed to be 4.5%. This is similar to what was received last year. And we just want to thank you a lot for the caliber of work that you've done. You've been really outstanding, so thank you. We need a motion to approve that. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'm so approve, or most of move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. We next have a report of our Public Works Director on the final plat of the Carwar Edition. Mr. Getchow, do you want to introduce that, or just turn it over?
Turn that over to Mr. Ellis.
Mr. Ellis.
This item works in tandem with the vacation of the drainage and utility easements that we heard earlier. This is, again, for the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District's plat, consists of 5.34 acres, platted into one lot. We'd be asking tonight for the council to adopt a resolution approving the final plat of the Carwar Edition.
Any questions for Mr. Ellis? Okay, hearing none? Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the submittal of proposed rule comments to the Riley-Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District.
Oh, no, this is, am I on the wrong one?
No.
One up from there.
No, sorry.
I move to adopt the resolution approving the final plat of Carwar Edition.
Yeah.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. That brings us to the next item, which is Riley-Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed Proposed Rules. Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. So at our last city council meeting, there was discussion about Riley-Purgatory Creek Watershed District entering a new phase of administration, where they'd be creating their own rules and begin doing, issuing permits for any land or water source disturbing activities. And the proposed rules, which are attached to the agenda, cover a lot of the things that you would expect a watershed district to be interested in. It's erosion and sediment control, water body crossings, stormwater management, flood plain management, a number of things that you would expect a watershed district, in which many watershed districts do address within their rules. City staff has reviewed the rules, and we did it through collaborative effort at the DRC. It's included Parks Department, Public Works Department, utilities personnel, community development personnel, building official. So we've taken a look at these rules and just tried to understand, what, what would it mean to a customer of the city, a developer of the city, or to the city itself, and how we would manage our property, manage our projects. And I should begin with, the, the rules that are being proposed are very similar to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. In fact, they're almost verbatim, but there are a number of distinct areas that have either become more restrictive, or certain parts that we felt were advantageous to Nine Mile were eliminated. So we went through the rules, tried to understand them, and tried to understand how they would be implemented. And I think at the end of the day, we're very supportive of them entering this phase of permitting. We think that more can be done for the environment. But we're a little bit concerned that it might be too aggressive in some areas. Buffers, wetland buffers, lake buffers, stream buffers, steep soap suppers, buffers, these are all new areas that we don't see Nine Mile Creek Watershed District imposing permits or buffers on. We also have concerns about how linear projects or city projects would be addressed. A lot of our projects are confined. The right-of-way is the right-of-way, and if we go in and, and do a reconstruction or resurface, these new rules would add additional restrictions, which would require additional right-of-way be procured, and in some instances, it's just not available. There's a home there that would have to be purchased. So we do have concerns about that. I think our overall recommendation is, we would recommend that they move forward with rules that are very similar to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. We know what those rules are. About a third of our city is within the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. They're proven, they're understood, the interpretations have already been made about what they mean. We think that this would be, it'd be very advantageous to have our entire city, or most of our city, fall within the same set of rules, and the Riley-Purgatory Creek Watershed District covers about the other 2/3 of our city. We do have the lower Min Watershed District, a very small portion on the southern boundary. But we see a distinct advantage to having one city, one set of rules, uniformly applied, people doing business on this side of town would know what the requirement's gonna be on this side of town. The city would know what the expectations are. So our, our letter commenting on the proposed rules simply states that, that we think what Nine Mile Creek Watershed District has done works. We'd like to see Riley-Purgatory move in that direction. And in time, if there are other areas that they feel don't work as well as they'd like to, then maybe that would be the second step. But let's first take this big step initially into something we know works, is tested, is proven, and we know what the expectation would be. So the letter's rather lengthy. There's a number of comments about amend this, change this, suggest this wording, but at the end of the day, it's really asking for something that's very similar to what Nine Mile Creek Watershed District has.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I think it's a really good point that it's complicating things if you have two different watershed districts that are implementing different rules. It's hard within a city to deal with all of that. And I'm concerned that the letter doesn't kind of leave the door open to say, "We want you guys to get together on the same rules, and we'll support whatever rules you have as long as they're the same," as long as they're the same, because I certainly have, I have very great concerns about some of those setbacks and those buffers that you're talking about, that are coming in after the fact, after people have done things to their property, after their plans for vacant property that might be impacted by it. So I don't want to lead them to think that, that if Nine Mile Creek changes their rules to coincide with Riley-Purgatory Bluff Creek, that we would necessarily agree to those. So. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Ellis?
No, since I'm familiar with this motion, I think I'll read it.
I did have one question before we go to that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I have some question about, you know, if they're unwilling to go back, and how much some of these setbacks overlap a little bit on our planning, you know, for, you know, homes or businesses or whatever going in, you know, does it add a level on to that planning where we can't do what we've been doing, which is really pretty conservation-oriented right now? It's not a thing of, sure, clear cut down to the river. We don't allow that. We've been very careful about it, but I sort of feel that the city does have some rights to make our own, you know, planning and zoning rules within, you know, a structure of other rules, too. But especially if they are different in one end of the city from another, I think that does create some problems. Plus, it creates a problem if all of a sudden they're going beyond into our planning and zoning process, a long way from what it's traditionally always been. Not to say that environmental stuff isn't important, because I think we have always believed it is, and water quality is important, and lakes, and I think we bend over backwards in that respect. But clearly, there's some concerns, and also what steps we take beyond this point if nothing changes. I'd sort of like to know what our plans are.
If the Watershed District implements the proposed rules without making any amendments, they'd be well within their right to do that. They do have statutory authority to do that. I think that they have been genuine in trying to seek public input and comment. They've had, well, they'll be having another public hearing tomorrow night. They've had a couple of informational meetings. I don't know that the word has gotten out very well, but I, I do know that they are asking for people to comment. I don't know what the appetite will be to make changes. They've spent a lot of time with this. They seem very pleased with the product that they've produced. I just don't think people truly understand how it will be implemented. There's a lot of room for interpretation within the rules, and, you know, I don't know if they've completely thought that through exactly, but they, they could certainly approve the rules that they have proposed without making any changes that might be suggested in our comment letter.
Along those lines, Mr. Ellis, can you tell whoever might be listening that might have an interest in this where they can find these rules? And about the open house tomorrow night, and the importance of making your comments known, because then they have to comment on them, right? They have to address any comments that are made, written or verbally or emailed to them?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. The, the rules can be found on the Riley-Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District's website. They're also hosting a public hearing tomorrow night at seven, six-thirty, here at the City Council Chambers.
Six-thirty? I thought it was six.
It, it's changed. It is now at six-thirty. So it will be here tomorrow night, six-thirty, City Council Chambers. Anybody that does submit either written or make comments at the public hearing, they do intend to, I believe, respond to those comments. And it may result in a change to the rules, or it may not.
Okay. And again, a response doesn't necessarily mean that you'll get a letter written back to you addressing your comment. It's that they have to be incorporated into a document.
That is, that is correct.
Like with the LRT stuff, yeah.
And I was gonna add to it is, we have, through the newspaper and our city website, put out the same information and connected people to-
Good.
-the Watershed District website. So I think it was the front page story on our city website as well.
Okay. Excellent. Councilmember Aho?
So if, if we don't see any changes take place from their proposed document after we make comment, I guess what, what options do we have as a city to, to try to, you know, from our perspective, remedy the situation?
I don't know that there is an option. I'm, not one that I'm aware of.
Mr. Russell?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there really isn't a legislative, city legislative option available. It's a separate unit of government who's, as Mr. Ellis correctly identifies, is empowered to adopt rules and regulations within their jurisdiction. And the city is not given under those statutes of veto power over the rules that the Watershed District applies. So in many instances, you see the private sector challenging cities over its rules and regulations, all the way to the Supreme Court. And that is the most likely place where rules that were too restrictive were challenged, or potentially a legislative response from the state legislature.
All right, thank you.
So again, the Watershed District and MAC, both with greater authority than us, and doing business in our city.
Have, have we made sure that the lake associations that exist within this Watershed District know about these? I know there are several lake associations.
Yeah.
And if we haven't directly emailed their representatives, can we tomorrow morning saying, you know, this is tonight, guys?
Yeah. I, Councilmember Nelson, I can't speak for every association, but some of those associations that we've spoken with or met with are very aware of the rules. They have been active in the process so far, and will continue to be active. But we can follow up to make sure every association is made aware. Again, as we were, as Mr. Ellis was talking about earlier, and what I was talking about with the city website and some of the information we put out, we're trying to make every resident aware. But, but we know the associations are aware, and we'll continue to follow up with them.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember Wickstrom?
Sure. I move to approve the submittal of proposed rule comments to the Riley-Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The motion passes. Any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.